So welcome to the meeting of the Internet, right? The Internet Society Foundation Board of Directors. So we started a bit earlier than we were. Well, actually, not much, like 15 minutes ahead of schedule. But you know, it wasn't kind of, there was no point waiting until for to start a meeting. So today we have one hour agenda, one hour session that we will do in, you know, like three blocks, half an hour of presentations, you know, about the action plan and everything, 20 minutes to discuss the budget in an executive session. And then we will come back and have 10 minutes to approve the resolutions related to the budget, the action plan and everything. So first of all, we didn't receive any apology. We have here all the directors of the board. Any declarations of conflict? Anyone recusing from any discussion? Okay, I don't see any. Perfect, then we jump right into the agenda. So point number two in the agenda. John, do you want to try that?
We have passed two resolutions by eVote since the last meeting. One was to approve the minutes of the first foundation meeting and the other was to elect Andrew to be himself. Since everybody has already voted in favor of both of these, I think they don't need any further discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, the purpose is just to document these decisions. Thank you. I'm moving to the third point on the agenda, which is the foundation update, which is going to be driven by Andrew, Sandy and James. So Andrew, the floor is yours.
I'm going to turn it over to Sandy in just a moment. So if we can make this big, partly so I can see it, thank you. So Sandy's going to go through this in detail because she has been leading the charge on this. But we believe that this is now the basis on which we can proceed, that you can approve an operational budget so that we can actually get things going. We can actually appoint, you know, some, some management for the foundation and begin, begin real operations. Because everything up until now has been all preparatory work. And that was the previous decision by the board that, you know, there needed to be enough preparatory work so that we could actually get things going. So we think we've done that. This is, this is the, this is what we're asking today. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're, that we're in agreement. If you have any questions about how we're going to do things, the answers are either going to be, that's what we need to hire somebody for, or else it's on slide N. So, so that's, that's the purpose of this today. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, thanks Andrew. Yeah, we're excited to present what we've done to date. I know you all have had meetings with Bridgespan and gotten some work done, but there's a lot of behind the scenes work that's been going on. And I just want to, I've been leading the charge and Andre Copeland has been my partner in, I say partner in crime, but that's probably not the right words to use. Exactly, sorry, my bad. My partner in this CFO should never use those words. So we're next slide and we'll talk about what we've been doing. Okay, so what we're going to talk about today is we're going to check on in the strategic direction and that's what you all have been talking to Bridgespan about. So we're just going to check in on that. James is going to update what us, what's been going on with the comms and the website and the branding, a little bit more on the operations, all the backend things that has to happen to get the foundation up and running. And then after that, we'll go through what our next steps are in making this go live. Oh, you can, yeah, thank you. So this slide shows the, the guiding principles for decision making. This should all look familiar to everybody because we've been talking about it before in the other meetings we have had in getting this up and running. So the first one, first principle is that we're going to be measuring our impact and progress. So we have to measure when the money goes out, what's the, what's the measurement, what's the progress that's going on? We are going to focus on where there are funding gaps in these areas. We are going to focus on the underserved in terms of where the money will go. And we're going to partner with other organizations or look to partner with other organizations to maximize the impact. The overall underlying, it's right there on there, is we're going to test and learn. Again, we hope that everything will be a success and be wonderful at the gate, but we are recognizing the fact that this is a, a new area and we're going to see over the next year or so where we put our money and reevaluate and come back and evaluate, should we go forward, should we not, et cetera. Next slide. So these are the five program areas. Again, this should look familiar to you. The first area is the disaster relief and recovery. And I'm not going to read it verbatim, but we being you, the board, has decided to, we're going to support chapters and partners in efforts to quickly reconnect when there are natural disasters that hit. The chapter capacity grant, that's, that's what we call beyond the net and that's moving over to the foundation. And that will, it will, what we're going to focus on as we move it over the foundation is to look at our measurement and evaluate that, what has been the impacts, what will be the impacts going forward, et cetera. The community capacity is similar to beyond the net, but that goes out to the community, the larger community, not just focusing on chapters. Innovation to support the application of new ideas, technologies that further the, this one I am reading verbatim, further internet development and have potential to improve NGO impact. So those four we had decided before. And if you remember, the last session we had a couple of weeks ago was research. And that's why it's in the line over there in the box. And we just wanted to check in with all of you that that was your understanding of where we landed when we had the last meeting with Bridgespan. So again, I'm just going to read this verbatim and make sure we're all kind of, it doesn't need a vote, but just make sure that we're all in agreement that this is the direction we're going to take. So the research is to support projects that take an interdisciplinary approach, combining both technical and policy aspects. So I'll just pause there for a minute and make sure we're all, or you're all good. Next slide, and I think, so I'm going to turn it over to James to update us on what's been going on with the communications and the website.
Thank you, Sandy. So Kevin, if you go to the next slide, you'll remember that the communications plan for the foundation was really broken down into four main pillars. We are at the point where the little green arrow is more or less in terms of being on the cusp of community engagement with the action plan having been approved now today and being distributed. And the foundation is mentioned in that. So by default, that constitutes really the first outward public communication about the foundation. So that is our launch moment for all of our community engagement going forward. And we're going to be rolling a lot of that out now over the next coming weeks through to the end of the year and into Q1. So that is the reason that Phase Two and Phase Three have been brought together a little bit more overlapping now than they were because previously we had looked at October timeframe as the moment to, to start communicating, but we realized that it was better to wait until this point because there was a more natural moment to kick off that process. So the community engagement piece, of course, is very important and really starts in earnest from now. The other two major pieces that we have been working on very hard over the past weeks and months are, of course, the preparation work for having a website for the foundation strategy, which informs what we do with our website. So those two pieces have been happening in tandem. And if you go to the next slide, Kevin, there's some more detail here, but we have partners in place for both of those pieces. We're working with Moving Brands, who is our partner of record for our global brand. And we've been working with them for some time now in over the past few years to develop and establish our brand, our brand platform. And we're working with them now to develop our brand strategy for the foundation too. They are talking to our web developer partner, Yoko, who again, we have used in the past to develop some other pieces of work, such as our Global Internet Report. You'll remember that last year, we designed and developed a website for that. And it was really a very interactive online experience. And they absorbed a lot of our visual brand into the way that they delivered that website. So these two partners not only are working with us, but they're working together to deliver a cohesive brand strategy and website offering for us for the foundation. Move to the next slide, Kevin. This is just a taster. And I do want to stress here that this is early exploration and just an indication of the kind of direction that we are moving in. There's nothing here that constitutes anything at all that is set in stone or concrete. But you can begin to see that, you know, the work has been taking place and that we are thinking about how we interrelate and how we extract the characteristics from our core brand and apply them to, to the foundation. As you'll recall from a previous presentation that I gave, we are very much moving down the path of a related brand strategy for the foundation. So linked to the Internet Society core brand, but separate. There were three options primarily, either a detached brand that would position the foundations completely apart from the Internet Society, or the other end of the spectrum, a master brand where there's a much tighter lockup between the core brand and the foundation. We're in the middle, so we're exploring what that middle looks like. I do, do not.
This question.
Oh, sorry.
Just one very quick question, a comment. I know this is super boring, right? But the logo that's next to the foundation thing looks an awful lot like Slack.
Yeah, I'm very glad you said that because I was just about to say that too. So it looks very like Slack or a little bit like an unfinished hashtag, which was my immediate feedback when I saw that.
It looks like a painting by Theo von Puessberg in 1970.
It also looks like that, yeah. So the reason it's here is not because we're going to do this. It's just to, to indicate to you that we are exploring options. We don't believe we've got there yet. In fact, you know, I think even looking on the right hand side, there are different ways that we could treat the font, the wording, Internet Society Foundation and the visual representation. We may not even have a visual representation, representation next to the wording. We may sort of build some of the core brand elements into the words themselves. You know, there are, there are different things we could do with this, different avenues to explore. There's a lot of flexibility and scope to do something a little bit different here. But we do want to carry elements of our core brand through into the foundation. We're beginning that journey right now. So it's just to give you a sense that we're thinking about it. And there will be more clearly thought out propositions to bring to you in due course, but we're not there yet. Next slide. So back to sort of where we are now, I think the focus for the coming months is really to bring the community up to speed with, with plans. As we do that, we want to build a well thought through media engagement strategy as well as segment our audiences properly, make sure that we have a good understanding of who our target influences are for the foundation, mapping out whatever a launch for the foundation could look like. And of course, that could take many forms itself so that we're completely ready for launch in the Q1 timeframe. So that is all work that we're engaged in right now in order for us to be ready. And as we've said previously, we don't want to launch anything until we actually have something to launch. When we do have a website for launch, it will be a website that is fully functioning, able to accept applications for grants, able to distribute, there'll be a backend system there capable of managing all of the information that people want and put into it. So the intention is to have a fully functioning proposition at point of launch in our website. So to summarize the communications pieces then, this is the comms timeline for the foundation. That's where we are. The brand strategy is in development and working in tandem with the website strategy. We expect to have more meat on the bones there, if you like, towards the end of the year, to be ready more or less as Q1 kicks off with a, with a website. So this, there's quite a lot of urgency to this work. We appreciate that, we know that, and we're working on it very hard in order to have all the pieces ready in time. But we are on track, we haven't lost any time, so to speak. And we're confident that we're going to be ahead of our delivery date at this point on all the pieces that I've just talked about.
Great, back to me. Oh, Richard, do you have a question?
Quick question. On that timeline, there's two gray diamonds for community engagement here. I'm just curious what sorts of engagement that represents, given that we're, there's a line everyone, I think, for today.
Yes, there is that. So in the note that will come from Andrew, it's gone out, okay, as we've been speaking of that, there is a, there is a couple of sentences on the foundation to alert the community to expect more. Because of course, the foundation is mentioned in the action plan. It draws attention to that and sets the expectation that there will be more information coming in the, in the next few weeks. So this, that first gray diamond is today's, today is the point of initiation. The January diamond is a bigger push at the front end of the year to provide as much information as we can at that point with everything that will have happened November and December.
And then of course, I suspect there's, I expect that, you know, there's this public board meeting and people could be telling you.
And this.
One thing that I want to point out is that we have, so this was the, related to this question that I had yesterday, but how come you keep not talking about this in public? It's not true that we haven't been talking about it in public, but we haven't been talking a lot about it in public. And, and this is a, a clear, I think, I think we raised this once before, but just to remind everybody, this is a clear strategy on our part, that we, we're not trying to hide anything like this. This is a community that hates surprises. And so the big reveal is not actually part of the strategy that we've got here. But what this means is that there are occasions when we got to push people to remind them, no, we're actually doing this, you should, you should get involved now. So that's, that's why this looks a little different than a communications plan that you might have for a product launch or something.
Any questions or Hans Peter?
I don't think it's an emergency that things we discussed before, but I would still ask if this just went out to chapter leaders I saw and some other lists. What shall we do if we are asked, what will the foundation be doing? What will be the content? Where can I get money out of the foundation? Where to point?
So we have a full set of Q and A as a document which we can distribute right now. I'll do that today.
I mean, in any case, we have had this discussion, like people were, were nervous, like if, if people understand that we are working a foundation and oh, how can I get money? And we are not there yet. But, but I actually, on this one, I agree with Andrew that I think it's, it's actually better to say, well, in the future, we will let you know, we are not there yet, as opposed to just wait until we are completely ready. So I, I think that's like, I mean, completely okay to say, hey, you know, we are not ready yet, we have defined bucket, whatever, and, you know, we'll, we'll be informing the community as, as we go along. So I think we are in a good shape, to be honest.
Yeah. And the other component is that you will see from the information I'll afford in a little bit, that we also intend to have a feedback loop in place with an email address that people can use to ask questions, ask for more information, you know, so there will be a two-way exchange going on. It's not, we're not, not keeping anything back and there will be ample opportunity for people to find out more if they want.
So I have a follow-up question. Is there any link from our current website to the foundation site or these are two separate entities? Is there going to be a press release on ISOC website? And when?
So I don't think we're there yet. We've, we need a, a new foundation website to, to link to. And we haven't got to the wireframes yet really for that. But we will have to clarify and obviously we'll be creating a bridge from one to the other.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, that's why they were presenting like the visual identity, saying that they are working with the, the companies because they are working on that. So until, yeah, until we don't know how it has to look like, it makes sense that, you know, it doesn't exist. Yeah, I was, I was checking yesterday, we've done actually the visual kind of identity a bit more in depth and I think there's good work there. So yes, yeah. Keep on doing that.
Just to build on that very quickly, we, we have created an interim page for the moment that contains or mirrors the information that we have in the action plan. So if people want to find out about the foundation at this point, there is a page on our website for them to do that. But that will be built out and expanded over time.
Any more questions before we go into executive session?
I still have a couple of slides.
Okay. Go ahead.
More information, more work's been done on it. Okay, next slide. Okay, and so along with the comms piece is the operational piece that's been being worked on. The one thing we have done is gotten together a foundation group within ISOC from the appropriate areas, a comms piece, an IT piece, all the different areas where they can get together and make sure we're on task of the, all the things we need to do. So with that, we've also put together a grant management tool. So we're rolling out a new, we, we did use, I believe Zoom Grants for Beyond the Net and we're getting a new grant management tool. So there's someone working on that and developing that for Go Live. We've also, you know, the things like setting up on a bank account, moving money to investment accounts, et cetera. That's all, all been done. There's other things on here, but I won't list all of them. Next slide. Okay, so the next steps of what we have to do to get it up and running. The first bullet is board alignment, which is today. So it's the meeting today. The next thing I'll be talking about is a foundation program committee, which would be a subcommittee of this board. And I'll give you a bit more information on that next. We're wrapping up our work with Bridgespan in the next couple of weeks. After that, once you approve the action plan and the, the budget, we'll be getting job descriptions together, start hiring people. We're going to implement that grant management tool. We have to set up, start setting up review committees for each of these grant programs. And we're currently working with Bridgespan to fine tune what the ideal makeup of those grants approval committees are. Also, the website rollout, the communications. In the December board call, we're planning to do a little bit of board education in terms of just to inform you of what your role is versus the role of the potential executive director that would come on. And then we're going to be set up for rolling out first quarter in 2019, which we talked about a year ago. And the next, go ahead, Kevin. The next slide talks about the idea of a foundation program committee. Now, this is a subset of the full board. And the idea here is to have a smaller group of the board. We're thinking about four people to review the progress of each of the program areas, to provide input as needed, to meet with the executive director. It's not to make overall strategic decisions on the foundation, but to allow the foundation staff, especially the executive director, to have a smaller group to work with the team and answer any questions, et cetera. So what my goal is today is to get the go-ahead to write a charter, get a charter together for this committee of the board and of course, run it by you. And then with the idea of when we come back in March, hopefully to seat the board, the charter would be shown to you in between there. But to seat the, this committee at that time to start working with the staff. I would wait till June to the normal AGM, but I feel like that's kind of a, a long way to wait to get this subcommittee together. So that's, this is the last slide and that's my ask unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, we call them committees, not subcommittees, but anyway, we will.
That was my words, yeah.
Yeah.
Committee.
No, just to be clear, so everybody understands that it's not like something special, it's just like a committee.
A committee, yeah.
As, as the ones we have in the, in the Board of Trustees as well. So, um, yeah, we can, I mean, I will ask for volunteers and try to, you know, understand, I mean, who, who, who can be there and who has the cycles and everything. And at the same time, yeah, if you can start putting together the, the charter, that'd be, that'd be perfect.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, good. Any, any more questions? So now is when I can go into executive session.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so we're going to go into.
Just a very quick, thank you. I mean, this is great work.
So please.
I encourage you to keep the momentum up and make sure that we are all supporting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other question before I try to go into executive session for the third? Okay, so now we are going into executive session for like 20, 25 minutes, half an hour, and then we will be back to pass some resolutions for, you know, if, if we have someone, you know, watching. Okay, thank you. Okay, good. So we are back from our executive, executive session. So now we presented the budget, we discussed it, and now we have a resolution to approve the budget as presented. So do we have it there with the numbers? Because the, the agenda I had before, it had just placeholders. Yeah, I see the numbers there. So I will give as usual, you know, a few seconds for people to, to read, just to make sure that it reflects our discussions one minute ago, and then we will pass the resolution. Okay, I see people nodding. We have some fast readers here, speed readers. Okay, done. If you don't vocalize mentally, you can even read faster anyway. Okay, so I would need someone to move. Okay, so the secretary moves and Peter seconds. And then, as I said before, when we deal with money and it's more than 10 million euros or dollars or, or around that, we do roll calls. So the same choreography as before, yes, no, or abstain. Pepper, yes?
Oyega, yes.
Irish, yes.
Wally, yes.
John, yes.
Montalo, yes.
Sean, yes.
Hans Peter, yes.
Israe, yes.
Richard, yes.
Isaki, yes.
Glenn, yes.
So the resolution passes unanimously. Perfect. I don't know if the rule says that we have to clap for. 10 million, sold. The second one is, is the LLC, right? Yeah, so people have read that as well? Okay, ready to, okay, so I, I need someone to move. Irish moves. And Richard seconds. And same exercise, yes, no, abstain.
Pepper, yes.
Oyega, yes.
Irish, yes.
Wally, yes.
Montalo, yes.
Sean, yes. Hans Peter, yes.
Israe, yes.
Richard, yes.
Isaki, yes.
Glenn, yes.
Okay, so the resolution passes unanimously as well. Okay, and that takes us to the, to the end of the scheduled meetings and this is our resolution. Okay, so my copy of the agenda maybe didn't have that. Okay. Yeah, 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 okay, good. So please highlight the server solution that I didn't have here. Yeah, just let our secretary capture that as well. Are you okay? So people are ready for this? Oh, I see, okay. We have identified the problem now. And we have solved the problem. Okay, so I need someone to move. Glenn moves, hold a second. Same exercise, roll call, yes, no, abstain.
Pepper, yes.
Oyega, yes.
Irish, yes.
Wally, yes.
John, yes.
Montalo, yes.
Sean, yes. Hans Peter, yes.
Israe, yes.
Richard, yes.
Isaki, yes.
Glenn, yes.
Okay, the resolution passes unanimously as well. Okay, so we have passed the three resolutions. And this takes us to the end of the scheduled agenda. We have. And this takes us to the end of the schedule agenda. We have any other business? So at this point, do we have any other business? Or the foundation, right? Okay, then I move to adjourn. Okay, and Hans Peter seconds. Okay, we are done. Thank you.